Council members, Mayor Jerry Wyers, Vice Mayor Joyce Clark of the Yucca District, Councilmember Jamie Eldama of the Ocatillo District, Councilmember Ian Hugh of the Cactus District, Councilmember Bart Turner of the Beryl District, Councilmember Ray Mauner of the Saguaro District, and Councilmember Lauren Tomachoff of the Choya District. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening. Welcome to Glendale City Council Meeting of August 8, 2023. This meeting is called to order. Attendance roll call will not be made because everybody's here. So if you'd take note of that, that'll save us a minute or so. The next two items on our agenda is our pledge allegiance and also our invocation. Tonight's invocation is going to be done with our By David Tomb of Bellevue Heights Church. Sir, if you'd come up to the podium on this side, my side, so you're facing the audience that way, if everyone please stand if you're wearing a hat, a gentleman if you're wearing a hat, if it's appropriate, if you'd remove it, and then remain standing after he's finished for the pledge of allegiance. Go ahead, sir.
Lost my page. Would you join me in prayer? "Gracious and loving Father, the heat is on and the school year has begun. Thank you for the Glendale schools. Thank you for the teachers, administrators, and staff that put such effort in providing a quality education for our students. We pray that their energy will last as long as their days. We pray for wisdom and discernment in their teaching. We pray that they will be gratified and affirmed in the midst of their tireless investment in our children. Father, we also pray for the students. Please fill them with a desire for knowledge, grant them a spirit of self-discipline, open their minds and hearts to the wonders of education and how it will bring blessing and privilege to their lives. We pray that students and educators will get along well together in a fashion conducive to productive education. For this council meeting this evening, we pray for an abundance of civility, for clarity of thought and speech. We pray that a spirit of love and generosity will dominate this evening's discourse and that you inspire decisions that will promote the general welfare of Glendale, her citizens, businesses, and schools. We ask all this in the name of the one who came to give life in abundance. Amen."
Amen. So everyone, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is the consideration of the minutes from the June 27, 2023 voting meeting. Councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the June 27, 2023 minutes? Anybody? Go ahead.
Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the June 27, 2023 voting meeting.
Second.
Do you have a motion from Vice Mayor, second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the minutes? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing's ayes, have it, do have it. That passes. We got somebody behind the curtain talking. We have no proclamations today.
Aye.
On the consent agenda, we'll now move to that. There's two items, Items 2 through 24. It's my understanding that Vice Mayor Clark would like a separate vote on Items 21 and 23. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. So items on the consent agenda are routine nature. They've been previously studied by the city council at a workshop session. They are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. We have any speaker cards on any of those items?
No, sir.
Okay. So if we could, why don't we go ahead and move all of the items and then we'll vote Items 2 through 20 and 22 through 24 separately. And then we'll do Items 2. Okay, so it'd be 21 and 23. Yeah, that's correct. So let's go ahead and read them all and then we'll take a separate vote on the two where we can get a voice vote. Does that make sense?
Um, it's the consent agenda, so I don't usually read the titles of consent agenda.
Okay, well, that's fine. Okay. Can we get a motion?
I'm unclear what we need to move, Mayor, at this point.
Need to move Items 2 through 20 and 22 through 24.
And 24.
22 and 24.
So if I move Items 2 through 20 and 22 and 24?
Correct.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second to approve the consent agenda, Items 2 through 20, Number 22 and Number 24. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing's ayes, have it, do have it, that motion. Okay, Ms. Bauer, would you read Item 21, please?
Yes, sir. Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Epiphany Landscaping Inc. for landscape irrigation and construction services for parks.
Okay.
There are no speaker cards.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Yes, yes, Mayor. On this Item 21 and 23, no discussion is required. I ask for a separate vote because as my habit and practice, these are five-year contracts. I do not support five-year contracts because they do not allow for continuity of council oversight and I will be voting no when the opportunity arises.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve Item 21?
I move Item 21.
Second. Okay, I got a motion from Councilmember Hugh, second from Councilmember Eldama for Item 21. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
He's not here right now. He's...
Okay, well, hopefully he'll get back here. Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
Nay.
Mr. Melner's still not here. Well, he's just gonna miss this one. Chair votes aye, that motion does carry. Would you introduce Item 23 for us, please?
Authorization to enter into Amendment Number 1 to Translock Inc., previously known as Double Map Inc. for automatic vehicle location and passenger counter system for circulator transit buses. Gus. There are no speaker cards.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve Item 23?
I move Item 23, Mayor.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hugh, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Mayor, point of order, Mayor. This is not a five-year contract, so I don't know if we misidentified what Councilmember Clark was trying to do. This expires...
I don't have the item in front of me, but it seems to me when I reviewed it, it was a five-year contract.
Is this a five-year contract?
It expires June 3 of 2024, it says in the background material.
Well, we'll let her make her up her mind when we get there.
Okay, alright.
Okay. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Not here.
Not here. Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
Nay.
Got a decision to make. How do you vote?
Nay.
You vote nay. The chair votes aye. The motion does carry. Moving on to consent resolutions, Item 25 through 30. Ms. Bauer, would you please?
Item 25, Resolution Number R-23-68, a resolution the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement entitled Cost Participation Agreement between the City of Glendale and the Roosevelt Irrigation District associated with the RID CC2 Canal Maryland Avenue Extension. Item 26, Resolution Number R-23-69, a resolution the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into a data sharing agreement Number 225512 for data exchange with the Arizona Department of Economic Security, Division of Employment and Rehabilitation Services on behalf of the Glendale Police Department. Item 27, Resolution Number R-23-70, a resolution the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an equitable sharing agreement with the United States Department of Justice for continued participation in the federal equitable sharing program on behalf of the Glendale Police Department. Item 28, Resolution Number R-23-71, a resolution the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Phoenix for the installation of a HAWK High Intensity Activated Crosswalk Signal at Camelback Road and 53rd Avenue in the City of Glendale. Item 29, Resolution Number R-23-72, a resolution the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County for the exchange of services. Item 30, Resolution Number R-23-73, a resolution the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, Award Number 693-JJ32340355 for acceptance and expenditure of the Safe Streets for All Grant Funding for the Development of a Safety Action Plan. That concludes the consent resolutions.
Thank you. Any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve Items 25 through 30 on a consent resolutions agenda?
Mayor, I move we approve consent resolutions 25 through 30 and wave reading beyond the title.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, second from Vice Mayor to approve Items 25 through 30 on consent resolutions agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing's ayes, have it, do have it, that motion carries. Moving on to bids and contracts. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce Item 31, please?
Authorization to enter into a services agreement with Utility Equipment and Supply Inc. doing business as utility crane and equipment for service and repair of heavy-duty equipment and ratification of expenditures. There are no speaker cards.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve Item 31?
Yes, Mayor. I move we enter into the services agreement with Utility Equipment and Supply Inc.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Eldama to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Uh, Mayor, again, as is my habit and practice, this and the following six items are all five-year contracts and I vote nay.
Vice Mayor Clark votes nay. Chair votes aye. Motion does carry. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce Item 32 for us?
Authorization to enter into Amendment Number 2 to linking agreement C-19-1201 with Mythics Inc. There are no speaker cards.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve Item 32?
Motion to approve Item Number 32.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Eldama, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Nay.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce Item 33?
Award of RFP 23-14 and authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Civic Plus LLC for a community and recreation scheduling system for parks and recreation. There are no speaker cards.
Any questions from our council? Hearing none. Motion to approve Item 33. Anybody?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve Item 33, motion to approve agreement with Civic Plus LLC.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Nay.
Chair votes aye. That motion does carry. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce Item 34, please?
Mayor? Mr. Mayor? I didn't get called on the roll.
I'm sorry?
I did not get called on the roll.
You did not call?
Well, we had enough to pass it. Okay, Mr. Turner, I even crossed your name off there. Mr. Turner, how do you vote?
Better to cross it off after I vote.
Yeah.
I vote aye.
Okay. I miss anybody else?
No, sir.
We were on a roll, too. Okay. Ms. Bauer, Item 34.
Award of IFB 24-01 and authorization to enter into an agreement with Independent Umpire LLC for umpire referee services for recreation. There are no speaker cards.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Motion to approve Item 34.
I move we enter into the agreement with Independent Umpire LLC.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Roll call vote. Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Nay.
Chair votes aye. That motion does carry. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce Item 35?
Award of IFB 23-37 and authorization to enter into an agreement with Wesco Distribution Inc. for street lighting, luminary luminaires, and supplies. There are no speaker cards.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve Item 35?
Motion to approve Item Number 35?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Eldama, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Nay.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce Item 36?
Authorization to enter into a services agreement with DXP Enterprises for CPX pumps, parts, and services. There are no speaker cards.
Any questions from the council? Can I get a motion to approve Item 36?
Mayor, I move we authorize the city manager to enter into the described services agreement with DXP Enterprise.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this one? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Nay.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries. Ms. Bauer, Ms. Bauer. Please, Item 37.
Authorization to enter into professional services agreements for on-call environmental services. There are no speaker cards.
Thank you. Any questions from our council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve Item 37?
Yes, Mayor. I move we approve Item 37.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hugh, second from Councilmember Eldama to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Nay.
Chair votes aye. That motion does carry. Moving on to ordinances. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce Item 38, Ordinance 023-26?
Ordinance Number O-23-26, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and providing for the issuance and sale of City of Glendale, Arizona, general obligation bonds in one or more series for the purpose of providing funds to pay all or a portion of the costs of certain projects of the city and to pay all necessary legal, financial, architectural, engineering, and other costs in connection therewith, providing for the sale of said bonds, authorizing the execution of a bond registrar, and paying agent agreement, authorizing an official statement, authorizing the execution of a continuing disclosure undertaking, and certain other documents, and the taking of certain other actions in connection with the issuance and declaring an emergency.
Mayor, members of the council, who provide staff report this evening is Budget and Finance Director Levi Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This ordinance is to authorize the sale and issuance of City of Glendale general obligation bonds in one or more series and authorizes the city manager, assistant city manager, or budget and finance director to execute all necessary documents in connection with the bond issuance. Representatives from RBC Capital Markets LLC and Greenberg Trarwick LLC, the city's underwriter and bond counsel, are available to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? I don't hear any. Okay, can I get a motion?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve Item 38, Ordinance Number O-23-26.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Melner, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Again, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries unanimous. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce Item 39?
Ordinance Number O-23-27, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, assuming jurisdiction from the Office of the State Fire Marshal for prescribing and enforcing fire and life safety codes and standards within the City of Glendale at the multipurpose stadium facility and surrounding private property and declaring an emergency.
Mayor, members of the council, who provide staff report is Glendale Fire Chief Ryan Freiber.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mayor, members of council, this is a request to adopt an ordinance amending General City Code, Chapter 16, Article 1, Section 16-8, relating to assumption of jurisdiction at State Farm Stadium and adjacent properties. If you recall, we were here in October of 2022. Deputy City Manager Rick St. John spoke to assuming this service during mega events, specifically around the Super Bowl. In late June, we were notified by Arizona Sports Tourism and Authority, ASTA, that they were going to request that we reassume jurisdiction of State Farm Stadium and the applicable adjacent properties for fire code enforcement as the authority having jurisdiction. In late, early July, I apologize, we were given formal notification that ASTA was going to give their 30-day notice to the Department of Forestry and Fire Management, which includes the Office of the State Fire Marshal, that they were going to terminate their contract to provide that fire inspection services for the stadium and adjacent properties. We are now at the point where the last 30 days, we've been working closely with the city manager's office, the city attorney, and the Office of the State Fire Marshal with our fire inspectors to have a seamless transition to take over that service and be the authority having jurisdiction. We are ramping up and prepared for the preseason for the Arizona Cardinals. I had a chance to watch the video from the meeting in October, specifically to Councilmember Clark, and some questions about costing and expense. The majority of the work that we provide for fire inspection and fire marshal services are on duty. Anything additional would obviously be a conversation with city leadership, and we would have those conversations of cost implications with the stadium and stadium management and ASTA. Thank you. I'm here for any questions.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion on Item 39, Ordinance 023-27?
Mayor, I move we adopt Ordinance O-23-27 and wave reading beyond the title.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, second from Councilmember, I'm sorry, a motion from Councilmember Turner, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Play my vote.
Go ahead.
I normally am reluctant to support declaring an emergency on ordinances and other actions because it deprives the public of the opportunity to review our work and perhaps take a referendum. But I am willing under these circumstances to support it, particularly that it concerns the life and safety of our residents and our visitors, and that apparently we're on a short timeframe, and that getting this done within 30 days is important. And with that, I vote aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote? You already did. Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries unanimous. Okay, moving on to council comments and suggestions. Councilmember Eldama?
None.
Councilmember Hugh?
None, Mayor.
Councilmember Melner?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to actually thank, we have a lot of city employees that work outside, and we just suffered through, I actually was escaped for a week, but we just suffered through the hottest July I think in human history, recorded human history. So I want to thank all of the Glendale employees, the public safety, the solid waste, the right-of-way people that are out there every day doing work to make Glendale a good place to live. And I just want you to know that I appreciate, and a lot of the residents I hear from also say, I can't believe your people are out here in this heat. So I just wanted to say that it doesn't go unnoticed, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to bear in thanking our employees for working through the hot July. Here, it was quite hot here.
How would you know?
I hear it was hot here. And I also wanted, in workshop today, I mentioned, and I want to mention in this meeting, too, that a number of my residents, and maybe residents in other districts, have been concerned about the Trevino development at the former Glen Lakes Golf Course. Construction there had stopped for many months, but I'm happy to report that Homes by Town has resumed construction. There's activity on the site, and hopefully they will continue at great haste, and we'll have model homes open soon, and they will continue to get sold out as quickly as possible. So just want my residents to know that. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
No comment.
Okay, and I have nothing at this point. Next on your agenda is the citizens' comments. Council makes this opportunity available to our citizens to bring information and business before the council that's not on the printed agenda. I have two speakers tonight. One of them is Edwin Robinson II. If you'd come up, you filled out the wrong card, but we got it fixed. It's supposed to be a blue one. But that's okay. So what I need you to do is we're going to give you three minutes, and I need you to state your name, the district that you live in, if you know it, if not, your crossroads.
Yes, it's Choya District, and my name is Edwin Robinson II. For the record, can I request an additional two minutes?
Well, right now, you're burning your time. Go ahead.
All right. Greetings, council members. For honesty and loyalty, growing up in Glendale, Arizona, will help shape the women and young leaders they will soon become. Like many of us here today, I raised children, twin girls, they're six years old, and attend Desert Sage Elementary School in Glendale, Arizona. Being a resident of Glendale, I want to teach them early that being a service to your community not only builds character, but also sets an example that others might be inclined to follow. They are smart, happy, energetic, very inquisitive, and eager to learn. But who will they grow up with? Who will they learn from? Share ideas with? Discuss new ideologies and create innovative ways to push not only their city but nation further towards love, positivity, and good intent. Well, the answer is your children, your grandchildren, nieces, nephews, and cousins. The community of Glendale should be instrumental and a positive reinforcement of our youth. But how are we ever supposed to connect when opportunities are scarce for meaningful interaction between families in Glendale and the individuals sworn to protect and serve them? Firefighters, police department, local physicians, teachers, grocery store employees, council members, independent contractors, and residents all contribute to the beautiful ecosystem we love so much in Glendale. More and more, we are witnessing communities who do not know each other on a first-name basis. Their kids do not go outside and play together anymore. There is a disconnect from the police department and our youth. Trust is at an all-time low when we should be united, and it should be at an all-time high. I love the diversity in the city of Glendale and what it provides. So many great minds, great people with great hearts and good intent for one another are right here in our backyard. It's our job as community leaders to ensure that every community in each district in Glendale is strengthened by love, respect for all, and a commitment to providing a space where children can be children. Adults can become acquaintances eventually and hopefully leading to friendship in a neighborhood where neighbors can actually become neighbors and not just the family next door. Once again, my name is Edwin Robinson II. I'm a student at Arizona State University studying psychology, currently interning for Power 98.9, an independent live radio TV network and news station located on 2310 West Bell Road, Suite 8, Phoenix, Arizona. I'm committed to excellence as I carry an Immaculate 4.03 GPA. I'm set to receive my first degree in psychology with honors in spring. I have a website, lovedgoodintent.com, which is based on the ideology that we can strengthen human connectivity by leading with love and having good intent for ourselves and others. Although I've not started a career in this field, projects such as these where I can create community events that stimulates the economy, increases and enforces positive interactions through safe utilization of our recreational parks and public spaces, bring families together, and entices curiosity in individuals on how we can use effective emotional intelligence in everyday social situations.
Can you wrap it up?
Yes. Well, in closing, your grant dollars will be instrumental in bridging the gap between the community, the people that serve and protect them, the families that work hard every day, and the children that learn through our actions. My proposition and proposal is for Horizon Park located in the Cactus District, which is headed by NQ. Parks have been a focal point in receiving funding. We have about $37 million for that, and I'm excited because this means my community event aligns directly with the City of Glendale's park and recreation mission, and a commitment to provide a clean, safe environment where individuals of all ages can enjoy social gatherings and restore the life and community in our parks that we are desperately start up.